Well, that's loud. All right, the quorum being present and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Will you please first join us in a salute our nation's flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, thank you for that. Carol, please let the record show that Supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney, and Shafoni are in attendance. In addition, Don Janusso Township Manager, Jack King Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukowinski Chief of Police, Bill Botorff Director of Public Works, Ted Wolford our Fire Chief, Dan Dizeroth our Township Engineer, and our Solicitor Gretchen Moore. Before we go to even citizens speak, we have all of our Parks Board members here and I wanted to really introduce them each enough. We had a success. Can everybody hear this? We had a very successful festival and I think a couple may want to mention something about it. So would you please, as I call you, please come over here. Chairperson Wendy Johnson. Please come here. Vice Chairman Jason Wheeler. One of our members Barbara Russman. Another member Arden Staff. Our fifth member Heather Manda. And finally, our member Nicole Lewis. Wendy or somebody, does anybody want to give us some tidbit of what you did?
Is this one? Okay, okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Jack and Cindy for last meeting. Thanking everybody, I'm gonna re-thank, of course. Really appreciated it. We could not do this without the support of the community, without the support of the Supervisors, all of the Township staff. Carol, you are amazing. The Police Department, all the Fire Department, South Bridge Ambulance. We thank all of you. The Cecil Boy Scouts, always there for us, no matter what the event is, the Cecil Boy Scouts are there for us. All the volunteers who really stepped up this time when we, you know, ended up not being able to get so many of the high school kids like we usually got. People really stepped up to help us, it was amazing. But, one group I'd really like to thank, and I wish I had the list here with me and I don't, is all of our sponsors. That because of our sponsors, we are able to have all these kids spend as much time in any bounce house they want to spend in. They don't have to worry about whether or not their parents have money for them to be able to go in these bounce houses, to ride a pony, to paint a pumpkin, to get their face painted. And we love being able to give them that, and we could not give them that without our sponsors. And we hope our sponsors are just as proud of that as we are. And there's also, besides our sponsors, throughout the year, we have businesses who also provide baskets and prizes and giveaways. And all this is what makes us successful. So, we thank everybody involved. We couldn't do it without you, and please know how much we appreciate you.
Does anybody else want to make any comment? Hey, here's what I'll tell you. We appreciate you guys coming here tonight and I would tell you, sometimes our meetings get boring. You're welcome to stay, but if you have other obligations, then you gotta go to them. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take comments from our residents on any item you see on the agenda. And again, we have a lot of people here, so please respect the three-minute time limit so we can get to our agenda. So, if you want to make comments, please come up to the microphone. Give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Kevin Camerson, 15 Swahart Road. Just a question about Resolution 241 2024. Consider supporting the Cecil Township Municipal Authority LSA grant application. My question and comment is, you know, back a month ago, I read in The Observer about all the grants that were given for 2024. You know, it's great. And the deadline to submit for 2025 was October 30th. I know it's been two, three years for Cecil Township to submit something. I thought we were gonna try to submit for next year. Is that in process, or?
Related to Klinger or just in?
No, no, just trying to get some grants. I mean, it's, a lot of Townships receive a lot of money, different things, and when's the last time Cecil submitted a grant?
Two years ago. We submitted, not last year, the year before. We are actively, Dan Dizeroth at our last meeting and I asked the Board's permission to actively work on a master plan for Klinger. We got a hundred and, $100,000 from LSA last time for Klinger, I can't remember, $80,000, something like that. And then combined with another grant, we also got a grant for a salt storage shed, which was about $600,000. We actually just this past Friday got a $10,000 grant from Pennsylvania American Water. I haven't even had the opportunity to tell the Board about it yet, because I haven't spoken yet, nobody else has spoken. So, we're getting grants just because it's not LSA. A lot of times with LSA, you know this, you are a Board Member, they ask Townships to prioritize. So, if the Municipal Authority is submitting one, we won't submit one because we won't both get them. So then we're trying not to compete with each other. But we are actively pursuing grant and receiving grant.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Kevin, and also, as any group in our Township, they ask us, we will consider it and if we can help them get through an LSA grant, we do help them get it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have two seconds since he brought up grants?
Sure.
I got a call last week from Gary Lowall at Pennsylvania American Water, saying they had some community funds to give out, and would we be interested, obviously my response was yes, please. I reached out to Don Janusso and Ted Wolford, our Fire Chief, and we will be receiving a $10,000 grant from Pennsylvania American Water for, what did we put in for fire equipment? Traffic safety. Traffic safety equipment for fires. So, that was another $10,000 that Township will be receiving, so. I submitted the email to Gary Thursday, last week? Thursday last week.
Thank you. Any citizens have any other comments, agenda items?
Yeah, this is AC Roland, 52 Sycamore Street. This has to do with the Agenda Item 240-2024 on the roofing, as that repairs to above your heads.
It's more than that. Bill?
I was gonna ask, could we get an update of like what, what all is, are they gonna get us a new roof, or?
No, I can give you that update. We had a roofing professional come out and he walked the whole roof. One of the things he saw that we have some cracks in the skylights up here, he sealed them with silicone, the open cracks. But he says that the proposal was to put a GS Seal Clear Coating over top of all of them. There's some fresh fracture cracks, but no actually wide-open cracks, except the one he fixed. He gave us this proposal that it will include sealing all the new boots and all the penetrations, for all the plumbing penetrations and heating penetrations, and to, like I said, seal these skylights here. The ones in the front, he said they're still perfect shape, there's no stress cracks or anything on any of those. Obviously, we know why, because that's a north-facing roof and it gets less damage. But also, he's gonna go through any of the areas of our gutters where our public works, I think Bill knows where they are, where if any of the gutters are leaking, he's gonna clean the gutters and reseal any joints that are leaking. So, that's what he's gonna do for that 3,015.
Yeah, it was such a reasonable bid, I was wondering.
No new roof yet. He did say we probably have at least five years left on the roof.
Okay, well, that's good. And is there any thought of adding solar panels up there to help with the cost of what we spend on the building? While, you know, that, there's a lot of solar programs out there available to Pennsylvania, and the Township would be well thought of, and it's kind of leading the way for the rest of the citizens to show how there are ways to offset some of the cost of using oil and gas and everything by, be leaders and put some solar panels up and show them how it doesn't pay everything, but it can definitely help and it will bring down the cost to us citizens and taxpayers. If, if we can do something like that, I'd love to see that happen.
Well, now that you happen to mention that, that's something that's near and dear to my heart. And for your information, when we designed the positioning, the actual positioning of our new public works facility, it has the major part of its roof facing dead pin south. And we put all the equipment on the other side of the roof, so that's, that area is prime. And someday, you know, we'll bring it up to the Board to consider it. It's wide open. Here we have a problem with some of the trees that would interfere with a perfect south-facing exposure, but that building is ideal for it. So someday, I will bring it up with our Board.
Because there are grants right now available that maybe could get filed now for next year's budget. But they're pushing that a lot here in PA, and I'll be more than happy to send you information on several different opportunities for both homeowners and municipalities to get some of that money and help.
We'll never argue with that.
Okay, and then my last question, which I didn't see on the Agenda, I'd just like to know an update on our sinkhole behind the building and what's going on. I know the DEP was doing the lead on that, but do you have any updates on that, Bill?
Don addressed that last month, but wait, Don.
It's totally, totally good?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go into, I gotta do announcements, there are a lot of people watching just online and they don't have the agendas here, so. Our Fall Leaf Collection begins October 14th through November 22nd, October 14th. I mean, we're still doing it right now. Again, as Bill always tells us, we have to have it in right to the edge of the road or in biodegradable bags. Our Ladies Auxiliary at Cecil Number Three, they're gonna have a bake sale for the Election Day tomorrow at the fire station. Our Municipal Offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. Our Cecil Township Historic Society will meet on Wednesday, November 20th at 7:00 PM here in the building. And they also are having their Second Annual Minors' Day Celebration, December 6th, at the Pavilion in the back here, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Our Ladies Auxiliary is also sponsoring a family bingo at the Cecil Number Three Station on Miller's Run Road here. Doors open on November 24th, doors open at 11:00 AM, and they'll have Chinese auction door prizes and a 50/50. Our Municipal Offices will also be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. And I think it's the final one. Our 20th Annual Toys for Tots Drive will be Saturday, December 7th, from 9:00 AM to noon. And I know we've always had a report from our Public Works on how successful that's been, how many dump truck loads of toys they've gotten. So if you're interested in it, it's 9:00 to noon, and Santa Claus will be there at 9:00 AM to noon also.
It's at the new building, Tom. It's gonna be at the new building this year too, so if you want to go see the new building, you'll get the opportunity, go check it out. It's pretty cool.
Lunch with Santa on December 7th at the Cecil Fire Number Three Fire Station. Doors open at noon, and Santa will be there soon afterwards. And I would also mention, we are also gonna have an open house on December 4th at the new Public Works Facility. So you're welcome to go up there from 11:00 to 1:00 on December 4th. That's a Wednesday, and tour the building. Our staff would be there to show anybody around who has an interest in it. No, it will be caged for finger food.
Frank's cooking, we're volunteering him. He makes really, he makes really good.
All right, our staff reports, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have two items. First, I'd like to recognize and thank Andritz of South Point and Horizon Properties for their donation of office furniture to the new Public Works Building. A lot of empty spaces and furniture that they have to get rid of, a lot of it new. And Bill was like a kid in a candy store. And we'd like to thank those two organizations for providing us with some office equipment. Also, I was contacted by the Washington County Area on Aging regarding their intent to apply for a grant for automated handicap doors at the entrance to Generations. All costs associated with the installation would be covered by the grant. However, I'll need the Board's input in regard to this request to guide my response back to the county. So I don't know if in the coming week you want to give me your thoughts. Of course, I think we should receive some drawings, some renderings, just to see exactly what it is they're talking about before the Board commits, but.
So I've been, one of the grant opportunities I've been pursuing with State Rep. Jason Ortiz-Ty is the total refurbishment of Generations. So maybe we can tie in like the doors to the actual grant of redoing. I mean, for those of you that have been in Generations and in desperate need of an updating, and so we need to get some money for that. So I've been working with State Rep. Jason Ortiz-Ty on that, so we can maybe coordinate them.
That's all I have.
Sean, Police Chief report?
Good evening, everybody, and I just have a short but nice report. October 28th, we gave a tour to Trail Life USA Scouts. There was approximately 40 children attended with their parents, and they got a chance to meet Canine Officer Diesel and Officer Jeff Holt. We toured the building and checked all our equipment out. All I have.
Thank you, Sean. Jack, building in?
I have nothing right now.
All right, Jack. Bill, Public Works? Thanks, Jack. Just some things of interest. Don mentioned the furniture from Andritz and Met Express up there, Horizon Properties. And I want to thank Teddy because he was the one that made the connection up here for us. I think you covered up some of that furniture before you put the fire out, right?
Yep.
Yep, there you go. So very nice furniture, like brand new. I mean, it's a shame that they just left and left it there. Horizon Properties, very generous, pulled us to go in and do what we needed for our new spaces up here. Giving the Township a lot of money. Also, I wanted to mention some of the, I don't get a chance very often to talk about some of the things that the Department does for the community. This year, we had it focused, Don and I talked, along with Gateway, about some of the safety improvements that needed to be done in the Township. And so, in our capital projects this year, we had four of them actually that we did. Klinger Road was a safety improvement, where there was to lower that vertical curve, improve the sight distance as you come up over it. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to go over that yet. And also to soften that horizontal curve as you go towards our entranceway up there. So that project's complete, and Morgan Excavating did a very nice job on that. And then the other safety improvement we did this year was Morgan Road. Morgan Road at Cecil Henderson was always very tight, especially if you were making a left turn off of Cecil Henderson on to Morgan Road. We widened that intersection right there and improved the distance. I want to recognize the Shafoni family for allowing us to go onto their property and cut that embankment back, so that when you do look right, as you're sitting at the intersection of Cecil Henderson, that your sight distance is improved. You can see traffic coming now, you know, so that was the second one. And then, north of Polly, we're still working out the details of the sight distance issue there. We'll have a general discussion later on, I think that's on the agenda for tonight. And we still have some work to do there to figure out exactly what it is we want to do. And then, in closing, the last project is the Walnut Street Bridge. That's just about completed here, wrapping up a few things on that. But that is certainly wider and safer now, and the entire Walnut Street has been paved. So, anyway, I just thought that I'd bring that up. Programs that we do in the Township to improve the roads for the Motor Republic, thank you.
Bill, Bill, I have a question for you. Is there anything in the works with coming up Coomer to get on to Muse Bishop Road? Is this a dead issue?
I believe it is. I think Dan Dizeroth has some stuff in planning that hasn't been completed yet.
So, this? It's still on a drawing board, but it'll be nothing until next year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then one more note, South Point Boulevard, southbound lanes were reconstructed this year. And because of the funding and, you know, the cost of construction, of course, going up, we'll do the northbound lanes next year, that's on our program. We plan to complete that project next year. So, sometimes you have to phase projects, do them in phases, and then eventually, you know, a year or two down the road, the entire corridor is completed. So, it's, it's in the works. All right, thank you, Bill.
Can I say something real quick, Bill? I just want to thank, though, he took me on a tour last week, one day, I forget, of the new Public Works Building. I didn't post pictures of it because I don't want to give away the surprise, but it's beautiful and I'm excited for the guys to move in and Bill to move in, and it's, it's good, it's looking good. Good job.
All right, Dan, Engineers Report?
The Board has my report, just one item to note. The Township has an MS4 permit, which allows us to discharge into the waters of the Commonwealth with our stormwater system. So, we're required as a part of that permit to do pollution reduction plans. The Township was fortunate enough to work with Pendot, who actually did the plan through the park that made the improvements to the stream. We were able to take credit for that, that project. We've not done anything in what they call the Lower Chartiers Watershed. So, we were able to meet with the Horizon folks that were just discussed on the furniture. They have some portions of water course over through, actually adjacent to the golf course or nearby that they control. I gave the Board a memo and recommended some budgeting to do that project next year, so that we finish that watershed and then we're in full compliance with our permit. So, just throw that out there when you're considering into budget this year. That's it.
Thank you, Dan. Gretchen, Solicitor's Report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I think someone mentioned earlier, the word of the month was right-to-know requests. We had two rather extensive right-to-know requests from Range that really took a lot of time to compile, review, and make right-to-know determinations on all of those documents. But I'm happy to say we did submit that right before coming here today, so that those two are done. We have two land use appeals that are in court, one of which was actually discontinued this month, which is good for the Township. Helping out with day-to-day legal, we had some employment issues that arose this month that we assisted with, and also helping the code enforcement officer with some condemnation matters. And that's about it, and you have my report on everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Ted, our Fire Report?
Yeah, I'm just happy it's November and we got through Fire Prevention Month. October was a really busy month for us. We were in all of the schools doing fire prevention pretty much every week. And we were also in daycares, and also got the opportunity to hit some office buildings in South Point and do some of the staff at some of those buildings. Call-wise, we were also busy, we did 72 calls this month. Seven times throughout the month, we were on call, multiple calls at the same time. Five of those calls were structural fires, three of them were in the Township. One of them did displace the people living there. Those people worked for a company and the company relocated them that night because of the fire. Steering Committee met a couple weeks ago. We're looking at making a couple changes to our drafted bylaws, or additions to our drafted bylaws. And we're gonna keep working on the merger process with the DCED, now that the ordinance has passed and established the Department of Fire and Emergency Services. We also attended various trick-or-treats and trunk-or-treats throughout the Township over October. And this past weekend, we finished up our live-fire training. We had a resident on Cecil Henderson Road donate an old house to us. We lit 41 fires in there to train with throughout the day. And firefighters from Cecil Township, South Fayette, and Mount Lebanon were there, training with us. Got a lot of good feedback from our firefighters that it was some of the best training they've had. Currently, the Department of Conservation, National Resources, who controls the recommendations for fires in the state, has said that we are at a high fire risk. So I'd just like to remind the residents now for the next couple days to keep an eye. We want to not burn anything, whether you're having a recreational fire or even smoking a cigarette, please try to be careful. Because brush fires are popping up everywhere, just of how dry it is outside. And we're not issuing any burn permits until this gets back into the low-risk level. If you have any questions on that, please feel free to ask me after the meeting or give us a call here if you have any questions about burning, and follow the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. We're gonna go right on to our resolutions, I know this is what most of you are here for.
I have something to say, Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the resolution.
Sure.
We have heard from numerous residents during the oil and gas hearing about their concerns with perceived conflicts of interest on the oil and gas ordinance. So I hereby make a motion to establish a temporary rule for purposes of tonight's business meeting, whereby any supervisor who has a lease with an oil and gas operator in Cecil Township shall abstain from voting on the oil and gas-related ordinance tonight.
Did you make that, shh, did, what, did you make that in form of a motion?
Pardon me?
I know, I'm just asking her, is that, is that what you're?
That's the motion that I want to make, yes.
We can't add that to the Agenda, it has to have 24-hour notice, but.
Solicitor, can you please?
Yes, so I will just say for the record, two of the Supervisors actually gave me their information related to any leases that they had in any way, shape, or form with Range. Those Supervisors were Mr. Cassiola and Mr. Agizio. And I sent those letters to the Ethics Commission, who gave formal letters to each of them stating that there is no conflict for them to vote and they are allowed to vote this evening.
So, so we're acknowledging the fact that the ethics opinion came down, that they can vote. That motion be made, voted on anyway, because it was requested by some residents. So can we have a vote on it?
We can't add an item to the Agenda on the square of the moment like that, Darlene.
And there would be no need to have such a motion if they've received letters from the State Ethics Commission, because that letter insulates them.
Okay.
All right, for Resolution Number 224-2024, it's Consider Ordinance Number 9-2024, amending the following section of the Cecil Township Zoning Ordinance as amended, Section 240-61, to add and clarify relevant definitions and to add and clarify conditional use criteria regarding oil and gas development within Cecil Township. Carol, is there a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Carol, would you do roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Cassiola?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Agizio?
Aye.
Supervisor Shafoni?
Abstain.
Supervisor Barney?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, the, the motion carries three, Carol, three to two abstentions. We have another one. Janice, Janice.
Remember that.
Janice, please sit down. Please sit down, Janice.
She said remember that.
For Ordinance Number 225-2024, it's Consider Ordinance Number 10-2024, repealing Ordinance Number 10-2011, which ordinance established the borders of an oil and gas overlay district and establishing an effective date for such.
Same move.
It's been moved?
Second.
Seconded, Carol, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cassiola?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Agizio?
Aye.
Supervisor Shafoni?
Abstain.
Supervisor Barney?
Recused.
Okay, Carol, the motion carries three ayes and two abstentions. That, that does eliminate the old ordinance we had. It was the 500-foot ordinance with the overlay map. So that's gone. All right, our ordinance number, and I might tell you, I know that's what most of you are here for. Your, um, meetings are sometimes boring. You're welcome to stay. We would love you to stay, but if you have other obligations and you came just to hear this, you're welcome to go now. I'll give you a few minutes.
Thank you.
And a lot of people like to get up and hate to get up amongst everybody else.
I have one other thing to say, Gretchen. Tommy, I have one more thing to say before we go on with the resolutions. But this is for Gretchen. So once, once it quiets down.
We're going to continue on with our motion so we can get the meeting moving. But I think, Darlene, did you say you had a question for the solicitor? Could she please have your attention?
Yes, I have a question. As this ordinance is drafted, it expressly includes the development of infrastructure such as pipelines that are needed to develop a well pad, including the Connor Samuel well pad, which we have approved, or for which all of the infrastructure has not been yet built. How will we explain to the mineral owners at the Connor Samuel well site and already approved pad that the pad will not be able to be developed and will be required to compen-, are we going to be able, will we be required to compensate them for their lost income?
We'll deal with any issue as it arises. Thank you.
She, I don't think they could hear that.
We'll deal with any issue as it arises.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, for ordinance number 226-2024, it's consider change order number three to the Cecil Township Public Works Facility. It's electrical contract to Schultz Electric in amount of $63,989. I think, Dan, you described that last month, but please just bring everybody up to date.
Sure. Why is this not open enough? It wasn't open. Okay, it worked. Took a guess. I, I brought this up to the board last month. Wanted to give you a little bit better explanation related to this change order. Specifically, at the public works voting from the, from the onset of the project, we knew that we were going to have to bring power to the site and actually upgrade the power. Power generally comes in, in a couple different ways, but to have all the power that we needed for the public works voting, we needed to bring in three-phase power. So we budgeted in the budget for the project, we budgeted $125,000 to pay West Penn Power to bring that service in. The good news as a part of this change order is that West Penn actually, out of what we budgeted, they, they billed us $54,169.93. So the change order, as it relates to specifically this part of the budget for power, was about $47,000. So we actually came out about $23,000 ahead of from what, what we anticipated. But the reason for that extra expenditure was that when we bid the project, there were some issues related to the fire pump service. We made some value engineering changes. We originally anticipated one service here on the left. This was the initial plan to bring one service into the building. What we actually ended up with was two services. One specifically for the fire pump. They wanted this to be independently done. And the second one is for the building. So ultimately, it's safer, better. It, it actually, in the end of, end of the day, it costs less overall in terms of what we anticipated in the budget, even though it's a change order. There were some, also some other minor items that, that were included in that change order. We had some temporary power that we got them to run in to eliminate us from using temporary heat during the winter months. There was some additional wiring that needed to be done for the garage doors. And there was some other work related to, at some additional circuits for the compressor room. So that all tallied up to the $63,989. So a, as it relates to change orders on this project, I'm actually pretty proud of this project because overall it had a 7.673 million dollar budget. To date, we've had only four change orders, three of them been electric, only one to the general contractor totaling about $125,000. That's 1.63% of the overall project budget. Anything under 5% is, 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 5% is usually budgeted for. Anything under 2% is really good. So I'm saying, I think overall, with Bill's help and, and anticipating issues, I think a lot of good decisions were made on the project. And I, I think this is it in terms of change order. So I would recommend the approval of this change order.
Is there a motion to approve this change?
Still moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five zero. For item 227-2024, consider application for payment number 18 for the work completed to date on the public works facility, another electrical project in amount of $2,205.76 to Schultz Electric.
This is just for normal payment of the contract. It does not include the change order. The change order would be paid on the next cost estimate. So I recommend payment.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For item 228-2024, it's consider application payment number three for the work completed on the public works facility or fuel station project in the amount of $94,500 to A. Graziani and Company.
Yeah, this is for payment for the fuel station project. It's nearly complete. We're holding some retainage, but for the most part, we're, we're complete there. And I would recommend payment of this in the amount of $94,500.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For 229-2024, it's consider application for payment number five for work completed for our contract A. 2024 pavement maintenance program in the amount of $19,500 to independent enterprises.
This is for the, the normal paving pro-, or the regular paving program that we've done for the year. This is the, this is a current payment that's due. In terms of, we're, we're still holding retainage for some minor punch list items. This is the current amount due. I would expect that the contract will be paid off next month. I believe that all the, the punch list items have been completed. So recommending payment of $19,500 to independent enterprises.
Still moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
The motion carries four with one abstention. Carol, for item 230-2024, to consider application payment number two, in the final work completed to date for the contract B. 2024 pavement maintenance program in the amount of $21,437.11 to Millie and Millie and Sons.
This is the final payment, payment for contract B, which was South Point Boulevard. We have the maintenance bond as required by the contract and we're recommending final payment.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For, uh, resolution 231-2024, it's to consider application for payment number two for the work completed to date on the Klinger Road improvements in the public works paving in the amount of $138,699.67 to Morgan Escavating.
Yeah, this is, this is for work that was completed on the Windcrest sewer project. We were holding money for punch list to make sure that all the vegetation took place there. And that work was completed and we're recommending final payment.
Is there a motion to approve that payment? It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 232-2024, it's to consider application for payment number three in the final for the work completed to date on the public work salt shed site preparation project in the amount of $43,846.10 to independent enterprises. Again, this item is paid for with our, our LSA grant that was referenced.
Yeah, this, this, this project is filed out. We're in receipt of the maintenance bond. All punch list items have been taken care of and we would recommend payment as listed.
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I just say something really quick? If you haven't had a chance, go on my Facebook, look at the salt storage shed. It is gigantic. I did not understand that was paid for by a grant that was about $600,000. So it didn't cost the township any money. And all the salt that we have in the township is in there currently. And it looks like it, there's like one, I mean, it's so big.
Right, that was the, uh, the, 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 we had down there, the, 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 we put that unloaded that, threw those, uh, four, two, three jobs down there. It looks like a teaspoon of salt.
Literally. It's, it's crazy. And independent enterprises did an awesome job paving it. So I can't, I, I hope we get snow, but I don't hope we get snow.
If you can come, if you can come up on, uh...
Yeah, December 4th. Come up, you'll get to see it all.
11 o'clock.
12, I abstained.
Uh, did I call for the vote? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm in.
And I think Bill seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstained.
One abstention. Carol, four to zero to one abstention. For item 233-2024, to consider application for payment number one for the work completed to date on the wall that's recovered in the amount of $178,172.50 to independent enterprises.
This is a current payment. The project is actually complete. We should be closing it out next month. And I'd recommend payment as listed.
Is there a motion? Still moved. It's seconded. And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Carol, the motion carries four, zero to one abstention. 234-2024, it's to consider application for payment number two in the final for the work completed to date on the Windcrest Storm Sewer Project in the amount of $15,121.45 to Morgan Escavating.
Yeah, I, I got my payment number twos mixed up. I'm sorry. They were both Morgan Excavating. I, I had already mentioned on this one, recommend payment. This was for this punch list item. And the project was completed last year, but we held up due to the punch list. So I'd recommend payment as listed.
Still moved.
Been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 235-2024, it's consider reapproval of an application 2022-0033 for the Silver Creek Initial Subdivision Plan. I guess it's been named, renamed the Kosky Andrews Subdivision Platte for recording purposes.
Yeah, the board reviewed and approved this plan already. I just brought it up here on the screen for you to take a look at. This is the subdivision plan that takes out the greenhouse here, established. This is the sewage treatment plant. So it establishes the land on which Silver Creek would be constructed. So before they record the platte of lots, they have to record this one first. There's been a lot of back and forth on permits and trying to get this project off the ground. I understand they have their permits now. So they're moving forward with the recording. And I would recommend the reapproval of the plan.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Dan, are they, I heard they're supposed to be starting earthwork also?
Uh, they would be. We haven't had a reconstruction meeting yet. We're still waiting on submissions on stuff. But, but as soon as they're ready, we're, 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 be there.
All right. For item 236-2024, consider application 2024-0017 for the Liberty Grove Subdivision and Land Development Plan applicant Ellen Rank on Rising Road in the R1 Residential District.
So this is the, this is the, the plan for the development of a small number of lots. You previously approved a larger subdivision plan where Mr. Rank, it's a big file, it's taking a minute to open up. Where Mr. Rank, oh, actually subdivided and sold a larger chunk of his property off. He's just now proposing to, to build a small subdivision off of Rising Road. This would be Rising Road right here. This is the proposed new street. So there's a total of, I believe, 10 lots. Yeah, 10 lots, detention pond, and a small section of Township Street. This is going to be soared through the Midway Sewer Project. They're proposing grinder pumps, which would pump up Rising Road in this direction to a manhole. So Mr. Rank has been to the Planning Commission and, in a, in a provision we haven't used in a long time in the township. But we do have provisions for preliminary and final approval of a subdivision plan. So what the Planning Commission recommended was preliminary approval. This plan, if approved preliminarily, has to come back for final approval. The Planning Commission didn't feel comfortable on giving final approval because there's still some things outstanding, like having the sewage approved and some of the other things that, that they're missing. So in order to be able to allow the developer to actually start with some of those things in more serious condition, they recommended final, or preliminary approval be granted. And again, the plan would come back with all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed to, to receive final approval. So it would come back before this board. But tonight, it's just strictly a preliminary approval.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a motion to approve that as a preliminary plan?
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Contingent upon addressing comments from the engineer based on his letter on October 17th, 2024. So it's preliminary and it's contingent plan approval. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 237-2024, it's to consider accepting the resignation of James Jones from our zoning hearing board. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
Still moved.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Don, please send a letter of acknowledgement and thanking him for serving on our board. For item 238-2024, consider the promotion of Josh Leeds to the position of mechanic within the Department of Public Works.
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For resolution 239-2024, consider a 36-month contract with Centus for the uniforms for the public works employees at a cost of $334.27 per week, beginning January 1st, 2025. Again, this is a, a cooperative purchase that someone else did the bidding for us.
Still moved.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Consider the, 240-2024, consider the estimate of $3,015 submitted by Prescott Roofing for the roofing repairs to the Township Municipal Building. I did explain that before, what the contractor's going to do. If there's any other questions, Bill's up on it and Dan's up on it.
What's the guarantee on it? Is there?
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's hard to say you can guarantee patch and cracks. They, they could expand again. But he thinks it'd be good for five years.
Okay, so you think that our existing roof will last another five years after this is repaired?
I thought that before. I thought that before he went up there, I thought it'd be longer, but he thinks it, it's, in his experience, it looks like we're good for five more years, that's the most, it's an estimate, depends on weather and things like that also. Plus, it depends on how well our attic is ventilated, the better ventilated it is, the longer the shingles last. And he couldn't evaluate that.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
I'll second it.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item two forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, it's consider a resolution of support for our Cecil Township Municipal Authority for an LSA grant application for improvements to the Cherry Brook Lift Station.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item two forty-two dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider the public hearing minutes for Monday, October seventh, that we had at six forty-five P M.
I'll make a motion.
Is the motion?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. For item two forty-three dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider the board of supervisors' minutes of the Monday, October seventh, meeting at a regular monthly meeting.
Still moved.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item two forty-four dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider the general fund invoices for October first through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Still moved.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. So at this time, we do have residents want to speak, please come up and give us your name for the record, though.
You didn't need my name. Kara Sheridan, fifteen North of Poly Road. Just wanted to ask, are we going to put on the website, since, um, Mr. Jones, uh, tendered his resignation, uh, open opportunity for those to apply for a position on the zoning board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, Kevin Camerson, fifteen Swahart Road, um, brought this up on a couple meetings ago, and, you know, we're all reading the news and seeing signs all around different townships, I think you need to put on your action list, start looking at solar. On, okay? And second thing, you know, this is already November, have you set up, um, budget planning workshops for next year, me for the budget?
We, we're going to do that tonight, we're going to set up, uh, try to set a date for it.
And you are accepting letters of interest for the vacancy, then?
Yes.
Kara brought?
Yes. Um, anybody else? Go ahead.
Jane Worthington, seven twenty-three Wildwood Drive. I'm not going anywhere. Um, we still have our parking situation on Wildwood Drive, and I'm going to, I guess, keep showing up at township meetings until someone finally finds us some kind of solution to what we are suffering through. I have had a phone call from Cindy, and we've had a discussion, but I've been told that we can't pave that alley behind Wildwood Drive because of a drainage problem. Now, I will say that I've walked down there, and I've looked at the drainage problem that doesn't exist, and I've seen, you called me about a month and a half ago.
I did talk to you, but I thi, I didn't say anything about a drainage problem.
Okay, well, I have notes, I mean, I don't know how.
There's a sewer easement back there.
You know, we have a problem back there, and I've looked, we can, you know, build a little lip or whatever we need, but I have nowhere to park. And as the snow starts to fly, and the people that are on the right side of the road, they have those big driveways that go up, they're going to start parking, and I don't get home until now. So I literally have nowhere to park, and the, the police chief will tell you, I bring the cars down to the parking lot down here, 'cause, and then I have to shuttle my family at six A M. And seven A M., and nine A M., and I have to be at work at nine A M. We have nowhere to go. We need paving in that alley, we need to be able to have parking so that we can pave our yard and move upwards towards our house. We need to get our cars off the road, and I know that everybody's accused me of having too many cars, but I have foster kids, I have my own kids, they drive, they have cars, they have licenses, they pay their own insurances, and they have jobs. I live in this house, and when I came to this house in Cecil Township, I was open about the fact that I have transient children through my home. I can't help that they've grown up and they now drive, so I would really like you to consider again any options that we can look at to pave the alley. Now, we have paved three houses in, so three families from the right-hand side are enjoying the pavement, and they're pulling up and they're bringing their equipment and things in, but when it rains and snows, I can't. Now, if you go past my house every night, I'm parked in the yard. I take the four-by-four and we take the Jeep up the yard, we have no access to it, we're tearing up our yard, we're muddying up the alley. So any solutions to that?
Can I, can I respond?
Frank, Jesse. Can I address it?
Well, can I clarify something really quick, though? I didn't say there was a drainage problem, there's a sewer easement back there, so that's different. What I meant by a sewer easement is that you can't pave and, like, where they would need to get access to the sewer, it's not that you can actively see water draining down there.
Well, that's not true, there's no rule they can't pave on top of a sewer easement.
No, so what we did, um, last fall, um, young blood paving, we milled and paved about two hundred feet of that. Okay, there's, I believe, approximately eight hundred feet left, um, so we could, you know, look at the width of it to make sure we can fit the paver in there to pave nine feet, and then put it on the, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, paving program for roughly would be about sixty thousand dollars, you know, to mill out and put, uh, millings, fabric, and then, uh, I think we did four inches, nineteen millimeter bill, was that what we did on the first section? We'll have to take a look and see if we have the whis, yeah, it possibly could be done.
Can I just say this? Look, I have sympathy for you, I've talked to you multiple times on the phone, I understand, I have multiple children with driving license and stuff, part of the problem is you have at least five cars, so you're taking up your two spots that are dedicated in front of your house. To your, with those, and then other people can't park there, so sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money for us to spend on that. I'm not saying we won't, I'm just saying the board needs to consider that, like, you bought that home knowing the parking limitations and knowing how many children you had with cars, so that.
Transient children, you never know how many children you have, nor do you know what age they're going to be, I've had everything from a newborn that I went to the hospital and helped deliver to a seventeen, eighteen-year-old that murdered his father and had to be put in a placement at midnight. Um, I never know what I'm going to get, and I never know how old they're going to be, or if they have cars, or, and just because they're in the system doesn't mean they don't work or have cars. And we help children so that they have jobs and have better lives. So I wouldn't know that three years ago, I wouldn't have known that. And I do have four spaces because I have a larger lot. So I have four spaces, and the neighbors, one neighbor's very unkind, and one neighbor has bought, and they live in California, so we're kind of using one half of their space, and we're parking two cars in the yard.
I guess, I guess my point is, I have, I have a lot of sympathy for you, we've had a lot of conversations, but there are also a lot of other residents whose roads need to be paved or maintained, and so this is a board. This is a board decision, and we have to factor in, like, we can't, sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend to solve, like, a parking.
I have a car parked in the parking lot that's worth over fifty thousand dollars, so sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I make a payment on that car every week. If anyone wants to come out and see it, I'll show it to them, would you like me to cash in my car and pay for my pavement, or, I'm just asking this township, I've heard some pretty big numbers tonight on some pretty big projects.
All right.
We're asking for payment.
You made your point, I understand that, I think Frank helped the, the residents on that early part, he, he investigated, and I think that he made a recommendation along with Bill, we went along with it, so I'd ask Frank if he would look at it again and make us a recommendation on what you think we should do, Frank, with, work with Bill? Could you do that for us?
Sure.
Even if you have to come in from the other end, you know, and not extend what you have, if we can just get in so that we could pull our cars up, I mean, we really.
He knows the circumstance, he said he'll look into it for us.
Yep, right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Kenny Strain, forty twenty-two, sir, James Drive, um, my, my question to the, to the supervisors is, uh, item two forty-one, twenty twenty-four, what is the Cherry Brook Lift Station?
Go ahead, Dan, you know about that.
Cherry Brook is a development over off of County Line Road.
Oh.
Um, and it had a lift station in it that actually pumps, um, it pumps, there, there, there's actually a treatment plant over there called the Cherry Brook Treatment Plant, so it pumps to, to the, uh, the sewer. I was just thinking in my head tonight, how old is that system? It's probably about thirty-five years old, I would say it was probably nineteen ninety.
It's old.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody on the board have any, uh, items, old, old business?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I've got it here. Go ahead, old business first.
Yes, uh, this is what took place last, uh, B O S meeting in regard to two-ten Locust Street. I know there was a lot of dissension going on, and, believe it or not, I was involved with the sale that was to take place by going to the commissioner's office to pick up the necessary paperwork while I was in Washington. And I know that there was a certain supervisor was condemned, saying that he removed it off of the upset tax sale. Well, that wasn't true at all. I did a whole lot of research, and when I went to the commissioner's office to pick up the necessary paperwork way back in June, I guess it was, uh, they gave me the wrong paperwork to participate in this upset tax sale. They gave me the Washington County Blight Mitigation Program application for Bill to participate in the sale as a resident, only to find out that Cecil is not participating in the blight program at this time per the Redevelopment Authority. So I not only went to the commissioner's office to find out the real truth about what happened there, I went to the tax office, from the tax office, I was sent to the tax assessment office, and from there, I went to the redevelopment. And at that time, the redevelopment told me, you can't use a blight mitigation application for an upset tax sale. Furthermore, they didn't realize that it was a duplex and could not be demolished whenever they gave me the wrong paperwork. So when I went to the Tax Claim Bureau, who advised me that the county employee pulled it off the township or the September upset sale, commissioner's office is the only one who has the authority to take it off of the upset sale. So I went back to the commissioners, and they finally said, yes, they were the ones that took it off.
Which commissioner said that? That's not what they told me either.
No, you know what? Let, don't push me to what was done, because it was Darryl and it was Nikki Sherman. And you called him four times that morning, and he didn't take three of your phone calls, but he took the fourth one.
I didn't call anyone.
Well, that's what he told me, I am, I'm not disputing whether you called him four times or not, I'm telling you what he told me.
She has the floor, please.
You what, I'm sorry, I didn't.
So anyway.
Wait, hold on, I didn't, you said something, what did you say, I didn't hear you say?
Pardon me?
What did you say? What was the last thing you said?
What did I say what?
What was the last thing you said?
I talked to Nikki, and four times you called him, and the last time, he finally took your phone call, so.
Wait, hold on.
What's the point of it?
So.
Okay, so anyway, uh, it, nobody could take it off the upset sale except the commissioner's office. So it was Darryl and Nick Sherman that took it off. It's being put back on the twenty twenty-four adjournment sale Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. If it will not be a free and clear deed, and I have the necessary paperwork here, if anybody's interested in that duplex, the half of that home, I have the proper paperwork here to fill out for the Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty-four sale at ten A M.
I'll take a copy.
And if, if it does not sell, at the, now, that's not going to be a free and clear deed either. So if it does not sell at the adjournment sale, it will proceed to the next step, which will be the judicial sale in July, twenty twenty-five, with a free and clear deed. That estate is not closed, the parents have died ten years ago, and that is not a free and clear, because I don't think any of the, uh, inheritance taxes has been closed or paid on it, and that's what the tax assessment office told me at that time, and that's whenever I went to the redevelopment, uh, blight. And Cecil doesn't even, we're not even in their blight program up at Washington County.
Can I say something, because there's been accusations, first of all, I didn't have any communication via Nick Sherman on the phone, all of my communication is in writing, which I just shared with our township manager, and I won't publicly read because that's courtesy, but I will share with you, I didn't call anyone four times, and the point was.
It's fine, I don't, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm only telling you what, this case is closed.
I listened to you, it is not closed.
I'm saying this case is closed.
Listen.
I got the information that I got, and what I'm saying right now.
I listened to you, will you please let me speak? I listened to you, will you let me speak? I was told, why would the Chief of Staff of Washington County care about a duplex and mews? That was the point, that was what was said to me in writing, you're welcome to see it. So I'm not going to go back and forth with you, but you're making accusations that either I lied or Nick Sherman lied, and that you somehow magically got different information. Darlene, it doesn't matter.
It's not magically, I went up there and I talked to him, okay?
Well, I can prove what was said in writing, first of all, second of all, this, the whole point to that was the residents were not able, that was supposed to go to tax sale, so that the residents did not have to live next to the garbage that was built in.
But it wouldn't go to the tax sale because they didn't give out the paper, proper paperwork, period.
So now you're accusing the, the commissioners of not handing out the proper paperwork.
Yes, because they were the ones that gave me the paperwork, they gave it to me.
So you're, wait, so back up, so you're saying that you went to the commissioner's office.
Absolutely.
To get the paperwork on Bill's behalf.
Absolutely.
And that you were given the wrong paperwork.
Absolutely.
Then why did it get pulled off the tax sale?
Because, don't ask me that, you ask, ask Nikki Sherman, because they were the ones that pulled it off, because I went to the tax assist office.
I did ask Nick Sherman, and he told me it was at the request of Cecil Township Supervisor Bill Shafoni.
We can't do that, you understand, Cecil Township, nobody can pull off a tax assessed upset sale except the commissioner's office. I was told that by the tax office, and I was told that by the, the main, main fellow from.
You did tell us that, Darlene.
The point is.
What's that?
I said you did tell us that, we got it.
The point was that it was requested on behalf of Cecil Township's Bill Shafoni, why are we?
I understand that you're saying that, but that's what we were.
All right, listen, that's not our issue, that's not our issue anymore.
Because this doesn't directly involve me, I called Nick Sherman, not Nikki, Nick Sherman, four times, I talked to him twice, and I called down there at the office that you went into, and they said, the way that you behaved, they wanted nothing else to do with the property at two-ten Locust. The day of the event, I sent two buyers, it was listed, it was, it was set in the paper to be on that auction, they went and paid the money, two different potential buyers, paid the money to get down there, when they got there, they said, two days before, which you knew because you showed up to Joanne and Jimmy Fowles' house to let them know that he was no longer going to be able to bid on it. I know for a fact they got it on camera, Darlene.
All right, that, that, we're done with this discussion, it has no, you stop, it has nothing to do with the township, nice, so you stop it. Well, we're done with that, does anybody else who wants to come up and make any comments?
I would like a copy of your paperwork to bid on the house.
Yes and no, if you don't come up, we're in the meeting, anybody else have any interest?
You offered it, Darlene, I'll take the paperwork.
All right, all right, we got, I have a. There, there was two items of new business, I, I asked to have the one put on the agenda about cluster development ordinance, and, uh, that came from, uh, we, we had a planning director from Indiana. There, there was two items of new business. I, I asked to have the one put on the agenda about cluster development ordinance, and that came from, we had a planning director from Indiana years ago, and he, that works well out in Indiana for some reason, and he helped write a party into our ordinance. It doesn't work in our type of topography. We, we've had a case where a developer came, they proposed what looked like a typical P R D plan to, and masquerading as a cluster development. If that would have gone through, it would have hurt the township badly if that approval could have gone through. This township denied that cluster development application. The applicant appealed to common pleas court, and then they eventually decided to drop it, so there's no more applications for that. So I think we need to talk about considering just eliminating that whole cluster development ordinance. It doesn't work in our township, and it would not be good for our township that we learned from this first application that came to us. So again, I'm not asking you anything now, but just consider it, and then, well, I think I'll get Jack to, send, send a couple things to us that we can look at, and then if you agree, we'll ask Gretchen to help us write it up.
Tom, can't we just remove it? Can't we just pull it, can't we just vote to pull it off?
No, we have to have a hearing for that.
Well, but I just meant, like, instead of, like, does Jack need to send us anything? Because wouldn't we just take it off?
Is everybody, I mean, if you understand that development or cluster development, the problems we had, if you're in agreement, then we can actually ask Gretchen to help us.
Goodbye, cluster development. I just want it gone. It's caused us nothing but problems.
If any, you have any comments about asking Gretchen to help us eliminate it? Frank?
Take it off.
Darlene?
Nope. No.
Okay, then I, we're lucky to at least are working towards that. Then Bill, Bill met with Frank down there to, to discuss some curbing, some striping at that intersection of North DePauli and Millers Run. I, I think we came to the conclusion that we're going to ask, or Mike Haberman, our traffic guy, to take a look at the, the curve data down there to make sure trucks can turn and make the turn. So, so we will have something maybe sometime this month on a recommendation for that striping and maybe curbing. So that's all I had to bring up. Does anybody else have any other items?
Tom, budget meeting. Set a budget meeting.
Oh, yeah. I, I talked to Dawn. We can actually adopt a preliminary budget based on what Cindy presented us. I, I know. Yeah, yeah, Cindy Stevens. And we can probably adopt that as a preliminary budget at our December meeting, but then we should have a work session for the public. We have to have it ten days before the end of the month to adopt the final budget. So if you're okay with us putting it on the agenda for the just preliminary adoption for our December second meeting, then we can schedule a meeting early in December for, if you have any discussions to go over it again and see if there's any modifications we have to make. But you've all, you're all experienced with our budgets now. You can see, I mean, you can look at your line items and decide if you think we should maintain funding for anything you see. You'll see that most, a lot of the funding is fixed. We don't really, really don't have a lot of discretion on insurance and payroll and things like that. So if you see some major things, bring it up now, but generally, it's a balanced budget, and we can at least get the preliminary budget by, over with in December, or, or, at our December meeting, I mean, and then we can finalize it for a special meeting at the end of December before December thirty-first. So just call, I mean, you can call Cindy, you can call me, you can call, I mean, anybody about any item you see, and then we can discuss it. So that's all I had about that zoning, that, yeah, so we won't set one now. At our December meeting, we'll set a workshop shop for the public. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is declared adjourned.
And I'm surprised they didn't give you the paperwork if you were up there after me. If you were up there after me. Okay, why didn't they give you the paperwork?